Hello Hector.
I am here.
Good, good. So I'm gonna start us since we now have a quorum and as others come they can join us. The meeting will come to order. The time is now 5:42 PM on Thursday, October 26, 2023. This is a regular monthly meeting of the District of Columbia Commission on the Arts and Humanities. My name is Reggie Van Lee, Chairperson of the Commission. I'm an African American man wearing a light gray shirt today. I'll now call the role. When you hear your name, please answer present. Cormas Berry. Cora. You're on mute.
Okay, here.
Thank you. Julianne? Cicely?
Present.
Natalie? Chase? Kimber? Carla?
Here.
Hector?
Here.
Gretchen?
Here.
And I'm here. A quorum is present. This is a meeting of a public body held in open session and is governed by the Open Meetings Act. Please address any questions or complaints arising under this meeting to the Office of Open Government at OpenGovOffice@DC.gov. Notice the meeting was posted in the DC Register, on the Commission's website, DCArts.DC.gov, and on the DC Office of Open Government's Central Meetings Calendar at Open-DC.gov. The meeting is being conducted in a virtual format via the Zoom virtual platform. The meeting is being livestreamed to the Commission's YouTube channel. An electronic recording of the meeting will be available for viewing online following the conclusion of the meeting. I would now read the land acknowledgements. Every community owes its existence and vitality to generations from around the world who contributed their hopes, dreams, and energy to make in the history that led to this moment. Some were brought here against their will, some were drawn to leave their distant homes and hope of a better life, and some have lived on this land for more generations than can be counted. True that acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage and difference. We begin this effort to acknowledge what has been buried by honoring the truth. We stand on the ancestral lands of the Nacotzcanq and the Fisgatouet people. We pay respects to they elders, past and present. Please take a moment to consider the many legacies of violence, displacement, migration, and settlement that bring us together here today. And please join us in uncovering such truths in any and all public events and to use such truths to guide the legacy of this arts commission. Is there any objection to the agenda that was previously circulated? Here no objection. The agenda stands as adopted. I will start with both a welcome. And since this is our first meeting of our fiscal year, I would like to do a little bit of year to review, take a few minutes to talk about the accomplishments of the Commission over this last year and where we are. So I don't know if we can put the slides up now? Yes, one moment. So I start this presentation by calling this our collective agenda. Because indeed, what we've worked very hard to do is to make sure this is not the view of just one person or even a small group of people, but collectively across the commissioners, across the staff, across our constituents who have given us feedback constantly on what we're doing, how we could do a better job, et cetera. So this really is a collective agenda that we're driving. Next slide. By way of governance, following our bylaws, we have recently populated all the committees, the six committees of the board, the process of use of the democratic process where commissioners volunteer to go onto committees, they meet as a committee, they elect their chair, and then the chair becomes a member of the executive committee by virtue of the definition of, from our bylaws rather. In the executive committee, we then have the obligation to appoint officers. The chair is me, you're sort of stuck with me. The treasurer is whoever is elected as the chair of the Finance Committee. And excuse some typos here, but by election, Gretchen Horton was elected to be Vice Chair of the Board, and she is Chair on the Grants Committee, so congratulations and thanks to Gretchen. Kimber Mankidi was elected as the Chair of the Finance Committee, and by virtue of that becomes the Treasurer for the Board. Julianna Vrenza was elected as Chair of the Governance Committee and was then elected by the Executive Committee as Secretary, so congratulations and welcome and thank you Julianna. Cicely is Chair of the Idea Committee. Carla Sims is Chair in the Public Arts Committee, and Hector Torres is Chair in the Art Education Committee. So I thank everyone for signing up in this way, the committees for meeting, for the election of the chairs, and for us to be able to govern this arts commission in the most democratic way possible. Next slide. Oh, I'm sorry, before I leave that slide, by virtue of the legislation, at this point, we can actually have fourteen commissioners. We only have ten, and so we have the possibility, the obligation, to add four more commissioners. Two recommendations have been made and submitted by the mayor to the City Council, and we're waiting for those two to be approved, and we still have two that we can add and ask the mayor to appoint as well. So if anyone has any people they want to recommend, ideally from wards one and seven, because currently those wards are not represented on the commission, we'd like very much for that to be the case. So if you have any people that you think could be good commissioners from wards one to seven, please let us know. We'll submit that to the mayor, and the mayor will follow their process. We're hoping soon to have a full complement of commissioners, a total of fourteen from the ten we have now. So now we can go to the next slide. While there are many accomplishments I can talk about around how we've executed on the strategic plan, how we're making progress against the recognizations from the task force on equity, inclusion, and belonging. What we are mainly is a grants organization. So I really want to pound the chest and brag about the great work that the staff has done in advancing our grants work. First, despite budget cuts across city agencies, we were able to increase our grant funding by two and a half percent FY24. So we squeezed in other places to make sure that we could really have some level of increase in grants around that which is most important to us and is really our challenge. The grants team awarded seven grant programs, totally twenty-six million dollars in funding. There were seven hundred and sixty-seven grants in FY23 that increased to one thousand twenty-five grants in FY20. FY20, I'm sorry, the seven sixty-seven grants was FY22. They have up to one thousand twenty-five grants in FY23. So we really have, in spite of budget cuts, in spite of challenges, significantly increased the number of grants that we've given out. And though we don't have these numbers here to share today, when we go through the particulars, you can see a number of these are brand-new grantees. So again, we've reached out to people that historically were not grantees of ours, not only increased the overall number of grants, but increased the number of new grantees as well. Our Fellowship Grant funded six hundred and twenty-three individual artists across all eight wards of DC, representing a ninety-four point five percent funding rate, as opposed to last year, it was a seventy point five percent funding rate. So again, across the most important metrics of success and accomplishment, the Arts Commission is doing a really good job. There's always more that we can do. We believe in continuous improvement. We strive for yet more excellence, but we are comfortable that we are delivering against the mission in the way that we should. Next slide. I want to talk a little bit about the priorities for FY24. First, we have to continue to improve the operations of the agency so that we are a high-performance agency. And we have set for our goal to benchmark as quote-unquote "one of the best DC agencies across all agencies" and "one of the best state arts agencies across the country." So that's our inspiration. And at the end of the day, what gives us that reality will be getting grants out efficiently, getting them out effectively, getting them out equitably, and in the most artist-centric way. So that we are feeding, nurturing, enhancing the artists as much as possible. So that is our first priority. We can't grow unless we get, continue to get our act together and to become high-performing at the very highest level. Second, I've talked about the notion of creating the foundation. And we're in the throes of sorting out what the options would be and how we might do that. There were some concerns initially that, well, how is this foundation going to be different from the Arts Commission? And will this foundation be in competition with the Arts Commission? And the reality is, at least along two dimensions, this is, this foundation is something that the Arts Commission just is not allowed to do. First, to serve as a fiscal sponsor for artists and small arts organizations that don't have a 501(c)(3) status but are deserving of tax-deductible charitable contributions. That would significantly help the funding of some of these organizations. People love to give money to arts organizations when people want the tax deduction. And so without a 501(c)(3), they cannot pursue contributions that are tax-deductive. With us serving, with the foundation rather, serving as the fiscal sponsor, they'll be able to provide that service to those organizations. So that is, again, trying to be more artist-centric and helping small organizations that deserve funding but just don't have a 501(c)(3). Excuse me. Second, the foundation can raise significant funds, millions of dollars versus hundreds or thousands of dollars or tens of thousands of dollars, from private donors and from public donors as well, so that we can continue with these artist-centric programs beyond those that currently can be funded by CH. Our budget is about fifty million dollars now, and so even if we spent all of the money on these sort of programs that the foundation could do, it won't be the sort of help that perhaps a foundation could do. And certainly, we are stretched to deliver against our goals right now, and so hopefully a foundation can help in areas that the commission can't. Third, we are pursuing the creation and sustaining of an international arts festival. I'm not going to use the terms you've used before about that little festival that happens in Miami and happens in Paris. You know, we're not going to use that term, but we want to put in place our own branded international arts festival. And for lack of another brand right now, we'll call it DC Art All Week. This is building upon expanding beyond the Art All Night that currently happens in Washington DC, so that we could really have a yet more fulsome show of the quality of the art in Washington DC. We can envision this going beyond the visual arts to performing arts, to culinary arts, to fashion, and we're working through exactly what it would be, but across a week, there's so much more we could do than we could perhaps do in just one day or two days. And we really want to rival other arts festivals. It wants to be artist-centric, and it wants to be both an economic and a creative engine for the nation's capital. And we think we can do both. Again, funded by private and public sources and connected to this arts agency in whatever way is most appropriate. And we're going to figure out what that connection will be. And then lastly, as we've embraced in the past the interdependence that this agency has with the mayor's office, with the city council, with other DC agencies, we want to be yet more proactive, yet more aggressive, yet more intentional in that outreach and driving that interdependence. So there's a whole outreach and advocacy initiative that's being created now. We will certainly want all of our commissioners to be engaged in that as we engage with certain council members. You can be a part of that conversation for those wards in which you reside and you have a real connection to, as well as relationships we may have in the mayor's office and with other agencies across DC. So these are priorities, to make sure that we're doing the best we can as a high-performance agency, to move ahead and create in this foundation, to move ahead and create in this international arts festival, and to really capitalize on and exploit the interdependence that we have with other entities across the city. And so with that, last slide. We are charged up and ready to go, ready to move into FY24. So I thank you for the time on the agenda. And now, as has been our process for the two years that I've been Chair, we want to continue to remind ourselves of why we're here and what the art is all about. So we have Teatro de la Luna, when I FY24 GOS grantees, Nucky Walder. You're on.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. We're Teatro de la Luna. My name is Marcella Fralito.
And I'm Nucky Walder. And we both, we were born in Paraguay, in South America. And we arrived here in nineteen ninety-four.
Nineteen eighty-four.
Eighty-four, eighty-four. Sorry, sorry, sorry.
I keep reminding her we're older than she thinks we are. So Teatro de la Luna, we're very happy to be able to speak with you this evening. Thank you so much. Thank you, Viva Paraguay. Thank you, Patrick. Thank you so much. And it's wonderful to see all of you this evening. Thank you very much. Teatro de la Luna was founded in nineteen ninety-one with the purpose of providing the Washington Capitol area, both its Spanish-speaking and English-speaking community with a source of high-quality theater as seen from a Latin American perspective. We have provided artistic services in various district places, including but not limited to our theater and workshop space in Petworth located in Ward Four, various public and public charter schools throughout DC's eight wards, DC public libraries throughout the eight wards, alternative spaces such as La Cosecha Marketplace in Ward Five, and street festivals such as Celebrate Petworth in Ward Four, and farmers' markets in Wards One and Four such as Petworth and Columbia Heights. And about our engagement with the commission to date, we'd like to share that in the recent years, Teatro de la Luna is most grateful to DC Commission for its continued support of our programming. Thanks to the commission, we have been able to continue to produce our main stage productions in Spanish with English subtitles at Casa de la Luna, which is our workshop and our performance space, musical events such as tango, ballads, and Latin rhythms, bilingual theater and poetry interpretation, workshops for all ages, our bilingual traveling theater for children, and it has helped us to keep the overall functioning of Teatro de la Luna whether online or in person. Support from DC Commission on the Arts and Humanities has been pivotal to Teatro de la Luna and to being able to maintain ourselves here in the Washington DC area. What wishes or suggestions do we have for the commission? We hope that the commission can continue to support artists and artistic companies such as ourselves. Support from DC Commission during COVID-19 and coming out of COVID-19 has been extremely helpful and beneficial to us and to other artistic companies and artists in DC. We are extremely grateful for your support, and we just want to say muchas gracias.
Thank you very much. I'm the translator.
Well, we thank you because you all continue to do the hard work, and we're just happy to be supportive of your great work, so thank you.
Gracias. Thanks. Thanks to you.
Moving on to our public comment portion, we have a number of individuals signed up for public comments this evening. We welcome your comments, which are very important to us. Note that all comments are limited to three minutes. Please address your remarks to the chair. Note that we will not be entering into dialogue at this time. The purpose of this agenda item is for you, the public, to inform us, the commission, about your views. If members of the public have factual questions, staff will be glad to follow up via email. When I call your name, you may begin your comments, starting with Reverend Dr. Sandra Butler Truesdale with the DC Legendary Musicians. Reverend Truesdale, are you with us?
I don't think Reverend Truesdale is able to join us this evening.
If she joins before we finish, please let me know.
Yep.
Do you have Catherine McDonald?
No.
Madeline Pearlman submitted a written testimony.
Yeah, sorry, the last three were written testimony. They're available on the website, and folks can read their testimony that was submitted in a written format.
Good. So that shortens it. If Dr. Truesdale or Catherine McDonald arrives, please let me know, and we may try to show that into the agenda. Otherwise, we'll go to the director's report.
Good afternoon, everybody. And I want to give a thank you first to the staff. This is our first meeting without Jeff being here with us, and we've been able to parse out new roles for different departments in forming together this meeting and a lot of the other functions of the agency. So kudos to the first one out to the staff, and I thank the commissioners for your patience as we go and do this new process, as we perfected this. I would like to first welcome our newest team members, Lauren Mallard. And then the information you all were sent, her resume was also sent to you in email. She is a PG County Maryland native and a recent college graduate from the Trinity Washington University here in the nation's capital. We have coming on board Denise Tolliver. She's going to be our supervisory public affairs specialist. And we are looking forward to having her coming on board on November the sixth. I want to give a space update. When I came here to the commission, one of the things that was really pointed out to me was a capacity issue as far as human resources in a sense. And so we began to hire staff to support the efforts of the agency. And the current space at 200 Ice Street Southeast is designed for thirty-one people, but the organization will be accommodating forty-five people within the next month. So the request for additional space is in the former Cable Office, Office of Cable Television Film Music and Entertainment Space, which is in our building. Many of you know this. When you first walk in, it's immediately to your left. And so we have a pending approval from the Office of the City Administrator. So we are, if the Office of the City Administrator, if anyone from that office is watching, we would love to have that space tomorrow or today if possible. And so we do also ask our stakeholders to keep an eye out and to also alert their members of the council and of the mayor's office if they would work on our behalf on that particular issue. Art Week DC or Art All Week, or what have we not named it yet, Chairman Van Lee, but we know it will be named something at some point. Stakeholders' meeting for Art Week DC was held last week on Wednesday, October the eighteenth. And more information about this is going to be presented by Chris from our events team. Our events team will be the project managers. Now, we're project managing this from the staff side, while both Chairman Van Lee and Commissioner Sims will continue the efforts from the commissioner's side. And updates toward this effort will be shared at all future meetings, and they will be shared as a committee report based on the results of the committee formed to support this effort yesterday's executive committee's meeting. As far as our foundation, a little bit later, our special assistant Andrew Jacobson will be providing a report. But yesterday at the executive committee meeting, I gave a recommendation that the commissioners form an exploratory committee who will define its function, outline the timeline, and seek statutory authority from the council. And so once this committee is formed, our special assistant can share the information that we have garnered thus far with that committee, and we will be looking for their readout at the monthly meetings as well as they update the commission on their progress. We have, the Office of Racial Equity has given a summary of key findings that we will be sharing with the commissioners. And I am really excited for this because the commissioners put together their four-to-four action items from the task force. And the commission had two of our staff members participate in a cohort that, within this cohort, they were able to do a pretty good forensic report based upon where we are in terms of what the mayor's office felt and what the Office of Racial Equity felt we should be doing. And as an agency and where we could go, they gave us some great recommendations. So that report in total will be sent over to the commissioners. So you'll have an opportunity for yourself to look over this report before the retreat that happens. Our Art Now 2023 exhibition, an update for that will be given by Public Art Committee. But just over three hundred people registered with a hundred and sixty-three people attending. And to those who attended, I think you will see it was a, it was a great, great energy in the room, and it was a great networking opportunity. Lauren will be giving more of an update, but I want to thank the commissioners who attended it and the staff who worked it and the attendees who participated. I think that it was, it's a testament to what we all are doing here. And I think myself, along with many other staff members, walked to the gallery during the day when we need a little extra reminder of why we're here. And I think the chairman and I both can agree, we discover something new every time we go in, that we thought we saw everything, but then we see something new. Number seven, one update, the grants team will be reviewing grantee data and feedback from grant applicants and the grant managers, and in an upcoming revamp, or shouldn't say revamp, reassessing our grant applications review process and award process for FY25 application cycle. We look forward to hearing what they come up with. Everything is geared toward making sure our grant process and our grants themselves are more fair and equitable. And that's the thing, and accessible, and that's a big thing. So I'm looking forward to some of the updates coming from there. Spaces for the arts, the staff has continued to assess and examine the current post-pandemic space needs. They'll be reaching out to commissioners regarding ideas and input they have. As business improvement districts and council members have been reached out to already, we recognize that many, as we heard last month and the months before from our public comments, people need space, they want space. So we're trying to do so here at the commission to create that environment where those who have space can be connected with those who need space and to see what that would look like. The music census, we will be announcing our timeline for the music census in a few weeks. We have signed on with Sound Music Cities. We are excited because this is the first effort from the commission to have targeted data that answers the question, what does art look like in Washington DC? And so the first iteration of this would go with music. I will be meeting next week with the theater community to explore what theater and dance will look like in the form of a census. It will go through the disciplines, and it's my goal in two years' time for the commission to be able to provide to the city and to our region and to the country what is art and what is considered art here in Washington DC from a quantifiable number. And I think from there, we can really start to measure success and start really adjusting how we do some of the things that we do. Last thing we'll do is the grantee meet and greet, and I want all those who are watching, and of course, our commissioners to know, from six to nine PM on Wednesday, November eighth, at the Eaton House, we will be hosting a meet and greet to celebrate our FY2024 grantees and provide an opportunity for the grantees, the commission staff, the commissioners, and the public to connect and be in community. So again, this is on Wednesday, November eighth, from six to nine at the Eaton House. This is, you go into the Eaton Hotel, it's like right next door, is the part of the Eaton. And we really look forward to seeing you all there. And again, I'm grateful to all of those who have attended all of our events. And we are, just to reiterate one other point from the, to just to kind of amend a statement I did say regarding the the foundation, we want to investigate whether the commission wishes to seek statutory authority for the purpose of creating a foundation. We don't want to presume anything. We want the committee to do its work. And with that, that is my report. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, thank you. And I should have said when I finished my report, any questions? So any questions for me or Erin based on the reports of the questions, comments from the commissioners in particular?
Yeah, this is definitely, I just had one quick question. Can you talk a little bit more about what we expect to get from the music census? I mean, I understand we're going to be, it sounds like we're going to be counting, but I wasn't really quite clear what we are going to be gaining from that.
So when we talked about how we So when we talked about how we create grants, how we assess need, how we know how our foreign grant dollars are going, understanding the fullness of what the music community is. And I say the music community, this also applies to all the disciplines. We're taking a stab at the dark, in the dark. Outside of those grantees who are in music who've come through the commission, we really don't know in relation to the greater music community here in Washington DC, what those numbers look like. Which means that as we, we do tout that we per capita give more money away per individual than other state art agencies. But we're doing so without really the full knowledge of what that community truly looks like. And that's reflected across all the disciplines. So as we understand what the ecosystem looks like and what the community looks like, we can then start to look at the grants that we offer and to ensure that those grants are helping to build the ecosystem, create the environment where the private sector, of course, can compete, thrive, innovate. And also where the margins are. Because what we're realizing is that is in those margins, that's how, how we, how can we measure the success of our grants about how we tighten those margins in a sense? And we're providing grants that really meet the needs of the fullness of that community. So the census ranges, we, there was a census that was done by the city in two thousand nineteen. It was not released and it was able to give us data to understand exactly. One, there was one interesting piece. There has been an antidote for a number of years that many artists and musicians leave DC because the cost of living is too high. That's not really the case. The case is that, yes, those musicians do leave DC, but about the same amount of musicians leave DC as musicians come to DC. And the reasons have less to do with the cost of living in the city, but growing families and wanting to be nearer to family structures that can help support as families are growing, especially young families. So having that kind of data will help us shape how our grant dollars and how our grants are formed and where, where we can further meet the need, especially in being fair and equitable.
And I understand that's excellent because there's a lot of mythology about what our grantees need and what they want. And some of it makes sense, common sense, if you didn't know. So it's so important that we go to our constituents and ask the question and then make sure that we're delivering or that we do then deliver against their needs. So, so thank you. So Cicely, does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. And yeah, I'm a numbers girl, so I love that. And I'm looking forward to seeing what the results of it is.
Good. Any other questions on either my presentation or Aaron's? If not, I see that Catherine McDonald has joined us. And we'd certainly like to hear your public comments.
Thank you, Commissioner. Very timely because I, my written submission was basically addressing the questions we're discussing, discussing now, which is about the affordable studio space and needs of DC artists. And my basic question was, has the DC Commission on the Arts and Humanities done a needs assessment or some kind of survey to find out exactly what, what the environment is? And I just made a really long list of questions. I'm sure there are others that I would like answered about DC artists. And this, I'm a visual artist, so this could also apply to all kinds of artists, whether they're performing artists or musicians, et cetera. But I don't know if you really want me to read this long list.
But please do send it to us.
I did send it to you. I, I sent it to you in the portal. And I also sent it by email. And it was basically trying to find out how much space is available for studio space, whether people own their spaces, whether they rent the space and how many, and also doing some gathering of information about what kinds of commercial gallery spaces are available for exhibition outside of like, there's a commercial gallery areas and there's also nonprofit gallery areas. Basically trying to find out what is this total square footage of that, those spaces and how many artists do these spaces exhibit annually? And how many artists live in DC as opposed to work in DC? How many, that, those are just some of the questions. But I think a formal needs assessment done by some group, I'm only an artist, so I wouldn't know how to do it. You know, to actually answer some of those questions.
I know that is our intention. So Aaron, I'll let you respond. Is, is, are indeed we planning to do a study of that nature?
Yes, what has been done so far? And I think that's because what you're saying is, I think, what every artist has been reaching out to us about. I, as an artist, have been speaking about this before the pandemic set on. So what we did with some of our GOS recipients, we put out a quick questionnaire and did a quick assessment of as far as what space needs are. And what we recognize is that, well, not all of the artists and those who need space are in dire financial straits. It's the process of being able to be connected to the space that was the largest barrier. And so we engaged in a conversation with the DC Economic Partnership as well as with the downtown bid, Golden Triangle bid, the Georgetown bid, and next month I'll be speaking for the council of bids in total and requesting that they send us here at the commission some of their space availability that they know about. And this is going to take a bit of a moment because we want to be able to not only have the information, but understanding that the information that we get will only be a snapshot of that day. These are private sector, private everything. And there's no program that we have formally here that would guarantee, be a guarantee or a type of lottery or anything of that nature. So what we're trying to do now is just be as best as we can a conduit, figure out a way where we can disseminate that information and a way where we could get those who need space to those who have the space available. So we're working toward that. But we already did a slight, a slight space assessment with some of our GOS grantees. We did get some responses and it helped us inform. It helped inform us as when we were speaking to the bids on what kind of space we should be looking at or to, because there's a lot of space that may not be conducive to the needs that we, that were indicated to us. So that's.
That's the other thing, because I've seen people say, oh, you want space and just give people inadequate, insufficient, almost insulting space. So we want to make sure that we're really meeting the needs as best we can. So thank you for submitting the questions. Know that we are planning to do this more fullsome study and keep us honest on it as we go through the process. To make sure we really are answering the questions and meeting your need. So thank you. Did Reverend Dr. Tuzdel show up? If not, we will go into the, no, thank you. We'll go into the committee report, start with the finance committee, Kimber. Our returning committee chair and returning treasurer.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Well, we're excited to have a new finance committee in place and with Julianne and Cicely. So we are, we got some work to do, so we're going to get started and certainly in great hands of Brian. So I'm gonna turn it over. We have not had our first meeting yet, so we're gonna let Brian give us our report for today and they'll be ready for next meeting.
Good evening all. My name is Brian Yandy. I'm the resource allocation officer here at the commission. I'm coming to you tonight in a blue and white checkered shirt. And with that being said, we are in some very interesting and fast moving times here at the commission. Meaning we have three budgets that we're dealing with right about now. The closing out of fiscal year twenty three, the implementation of fiscal year twenty four, and then we begun the crafting of fiscal year twenty five. So with that being said, I'll just go right into the report. Patrick, if you could pull up the finance report for me, please.
Just one second, Brian. All right, can you see that?
Yes, I can. Thank you. Let me go to the next slide, please. So next, this first slide is a snapshot of where we are preliminarily with the fiscal year twenty three budget. There was some funding that was added towards the end of the year in order for us to hand out the GOS enhancement grants. And according to what the statute says, we had to add additional funding that we knew that we were not going to spend. So that is the reason for such a large balance towards the end of the year. Again, at this point, we are still closing out the fiscal year. But these are the balances as they appear for fiscal year twenty three. If I can pause there to answer any questions. Okay, can we proceed to the next slide, please?
No major changes from the last time we looked at it, correct?
Correct. The next slide is give you a snapshot and we just generally do this with each and every report. We give you the overall budget and then we zoom in specifically into the grants budget by cohort to show what the balances are. And again, the balance is here is as a result of us infusing funding that will enable us to do the enhancement package. Let me go to the next slide, please. And okay, so now we're into fiscal year twenty four. What's important to notice here is that we're currently budgeted at fifty one million dollars. And that is predicated on the revenue forecast remaining stable. But we are set to give out forty two million dollars in grants this year, this fiscal year. That process is now underway as it pertains to the execution of the grants. I will be working with Terrell Lauren and a number of members on our communications team as we have important announcements by way of the new system and the way that grants will be submitted as well as the invoices themselves. So we look to bring that information to you relatively soon. We look to probably develop a whole marketing or advertising campaign to make sure that we get the message out to the grantees and hopefully even through some outreach efforts. But here's the budget for fiscal year twenty four. Are there any questions? Okay, and lastly, Patrick, I mean Edward, if you can go to the next slide, please. And again, as I stated, this is what the budget looks like for fiscal year twenty four. Pretty, it remains pretty flat in terms of the general operating support. I think we were around nineteen million in fiscal year twenty three. And everything here is pretty much as stable as possible. That's important to point out as Chairman said, especially with the revenues projections and some of the things that, some of the factors that are happening within the city right now. We are still remaining stable and in some areas we've increased our funding. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Any questions, anyone? Sounds like it's steady as she goes. So thank you for that, Brian. Thank you, Kimber.
Thank you.
Any other questions for finance in particular? If not, we'll move on to grants. Gretchen, our returning committee chair and our new vice chair.
Thank you, Reggie. I'm a little confused. I'm going to have to lean on Terrell for this because I thought that what we needed to vote on would be included in Aaron's report. Who, Aaron's looking like, what? This, Terrell, are you on?
Yep, I'm, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So Aaron, you were going to frame what we were looking at doing for the capital projects grant.
Oh, this is what, okay, I understand. Giving an update regarding that a few months ago, when the chairman and when the council that is gave us, the BSA stated that we were doing a large capital projects grant. There were rules that we were given some guidelines to make and to submit to the council for their approval. We first discussed this and our outcomes from our findings at the meeting. I believe it was the first meeting that we had our new commissioners present at. Pre that meeting, myself, the chairman, the grants team sat down with Kevin on our team who's managed our capital grants projects before. And we came to two solutions. And the first solution is that we were given guidelines and they were some somewhat strict guidelines that we had to set rules around that are statutory and we can do nothing about. And so we created the, I would say, the fairest and equitable type of rules that can go along with the guidelines set out by the, by the council. We also did our due diligence, reaching out to some of our stakeholders and also some of those who have applied for capital grants before. And in doing so, we will be sending the rules as given out by the statute to the, to the council as well as a narrative of those, of those findings. And we did craft based on that conversation and those conversations, what would we feel would be more equitable and what would be fair to the community? That way the council and the committee on the whole will have both the rules as set out by the BSA, education and knowledge based on the conversations we've had and a type of legislation which we feel it would be most fair and equitable. And so what we would be voting on tonight would be the rules as set out by the statute. So the format may look a bit different than what, and you all received these rules in your, in your emails before, before the vote today. They will look from a format standpoint, a little, little differently because this is how we need to send this over. However, when we send those over to council, they will be accompanied with a letter explaining the narrative as far as what we, the research that we did and also include a version of legislation that we feel would be most impactful. And so that is what, that's the vote we would be taking on today for the new rules. We need to vote on it today so that we can get these rules over to council before November first.
Right, and these rules were reviewed by the grants committee and voted on by the grants committee as a whole and approved. So it now needs to be a full commission vote.
So with, how will we see those to make sure we know who we're voting on?
Those rules were sent out to all of the commissioners. And Edward, I'm not sure if you can pull up what those, the rules are?
There should be a slide, I thought.
Give him one moment.
Oh yeah, just one second, please.
Mm hmm, sure. We talked about these extensively before, but our grants, our new commission members were so new, we really wanted to give them some time to, to think about it and look over everything.
Exactly. We did talk about it the last time, but we wanted people to have the soak time that Gretchen talked to them.
And these have not changed from the meeting from when the commissioners, the new commissioners came on. This is the same data from there. The format looks different because it's formatted to go to council.
Correct. I'm sorry, Director Myers, were these listed as rules, a document called rules?
Rules, yes.
I don't believe I have.
Because the format has changed and I quite frankly haven't seen the new format, which goes to the council and the legislative format.
If they can be shared with me, I'll, I'll put them, I'll put them up right now. They weren't part of what we sent around with the, you know, with the reports.
Yes, yeah, the general, the general counsel is sending them to Edward now. Give us one moment.
Thank you.
And again, the, the same rules, this, this is the same language that was given a few months ago when we first met about this and we circulated it in the first meeting from our commissioners. And I believe.
I just think we need to be reminded.
Exactly.
Of what we're voting on.
Right, exactly.
Just one second.
Okay. All right. So hopefully everyone can see these.
Yes.
Yeah, we can. Thank you very much.
So who's going to take us through this? Not reading everything, but highlighting the important things for the votes.
As you scroll down and Gretchen, would you, this is the same thing that I can take us through this as well.
Yeah, I can't. Whoops.
Understand.
I can only see a portion.
I understand. So looking at the award amounts, stop right there, go look at the award amounts and funding. And remember, every, all of these guidelines are statutory. So this is what's already been laid out to us from the BSA. And I'll read these off so that we can be on the same page. The large cap grant program is funded by the commission. Grant awards under this program have a minimum award mount of 900,000 and a maximum award mount of 1.5 million per grant. And the period of performance for a grant made under this program may go up to three fiscal years at the commission's discretion and a grantee's stated preference. All right, we can keep going. Under eligibility, the first one is A, the eligible, the purpose for these grants can go for improvements of a facility located in the District of Columbia with a tax valuation of at least $1 billion or the purchase of a facility located in the District of Columbia with a tax valuation of at least $1 billion by an applicant with a 30-year lease on that facility. Okay, point two, 1.2 applicants must either Yes.
Yeah, you may want to just, we just want to point out to everyone that this is what replaces the old traditional fab facilities and building that most of you are familiar with. It's a new name for everybody, but that's the new name now. It's not Fab anymore.
Absolutely. 1.2 applicants must either own the facility to be improved or possess at least a 30-year lease on the same facility. Applicants must have at least seven years remaining on that lease. The 30-year lease criteria include occupancy history, lease extensions, other legally bound terms of occupation or possession such as residence by congressional mandate, by federal district government agreement, or by similar mandates. The reason why, looking at some of these requirements is that these are some of the requirements that we want the public to really understand that we're working with what the BSA laid out for us as far as rules are concerned. So this is not, these are not suggestions that were made or thought up through our traditional way that we craft our grants.
Right, and by BSA, we mean the Budget Support Act that came through the council.
Yes, ma'am. The facility to, 1.3, the facility to improve must be designed for and have as its primary function, the training, management, production, or presentation performances or exhibitions of the arts and humanities. The next one, applicants must be incorporated as a nonprofit organization with a federal designated tax exempt status. Keep going, applicants, stop right there. Applicants must have a primary mission focus in at least one disciplines of the art or humanities. And have a history of actively providing arts and humanities programs in District Columbia for at least one year prior to the grant application deadline. Applicants must reflect a commitment to inclusion, diversity, equity, and access at all levels of the organization. Now, I want to point out that this is one of the areas that we as a commission were able to put into the rules to ensure that we were promoting and ensuring that people who were seeking to get this type of equity, this type of money and support would also be committed to the values. And this is something that was, this was a right and at the behest of the council. They encouraged us to put this type of language in so that we would be able to ensure that those who do apply for this money were actually following these values. 1.7, grant-funded project must increase access to the communities of district residents who have been historically marginalized and increase availability of arts and humanities residences or workspaces. Okay, restrictions. Organizations awarded a grant under this program under ineligible are ineligible for a grant under any other capital project grant awarded by the commission in the same fiscal year. So we don't want two people getting two large cap grants at the same time, and that would not be fair. 2.2, organizations awarded a grant under this program should not be eligible for a large capital grant for two subsequent fiscal years. 2.3, additional restrictions may be included in a request for applications for the grant. And so below that, we just simply did definitions so that the council and as far as our, those who apply will have the same understanding of what we deem as access, what is a capital project, what does diversity mean, and things of that nature. Okay?
And that's it?
That's it.
So that that is what I recall us talking about before, so the format may be different. Any questions or comments or concerns from the commissioners before Julian?
I realize this is not, my name is Julianne. I'm a white woman of Italian Irish descent, wearing a button-down shirt. Thank you.
Thank you.
My, this, I will mention this every time we go through this. I mentioned it the last time and I mentioned it in also non-public meetings. I do not agree with the tax validation of $1 million on the property as a grant requirement. I think it is a hindrance. I understand that that was given to us to deal with, but I will continue to advocate for that to be removed. I do not think it is fair.
And let me just emphasize that when I talked about our outreach and advocacy initiative is for us to take factoids like that, the negative implications of the legislation now to our constituents. And take that to the council members, the mayor's office, anyone who listened to us so that we can hopefully have those revisions made. So we're not embracing this. We are forced to accept it because it is statutory, but we, many of us feel the way you feel, Julian.
All right.
Yeah, I think we all, we all feel that way, Julianne. And it's unfortunate that we can't do anything about it at the moment. But if we're all together showing one, one face, one point of advocacy, I think we'll be able to talk with the council and get this changed.
Because if I were to try to be completely fair, people didn't, some people didn't appreciate all the implications of what was legislated here. We're going to bring the facts to the table so they understand what has been the implication, the real implication, some of which are negative to their constituents. And then the decision we made, I'm open with full data. Right now, I could argue that this full data was not at the time, but it will be the next time. So any other questions, comments? If not, Gretchen, do you want to just make the motion that we
Yes, I would. So moved. I move that we accept the legislative format as has been reviewed by Aaron and written by our attorney.
And I will call the roll. And you can say a or nay in favor, not in favor, abstaining from these rules being submitted by us. Cora?
Yes.
Yes.
Cecily? Is Cecily still with us?
Yes, I'm here. Yes.
Okay, Natalie? Chase? Kimber?
Yes.
Carla? Carla? I see you're muted. Hector?
Yes.
Gretchen?
I'm sorry, I'm here.
Carla, yes?
Yes.
Great. Hector said yes. Gretchen?
Yes.
Good, it carries. Thank you. Thank you very much. Anything else in the grants committee?
No, that's it. Thank you. However, I would like to introduce our new grants committee. We have some people that are were former and one new person. So they are Cora Berry, Julianne Brienza, Chase Maggiano, and Hector Torres, of course, you Reggie and me, just so everybody knows who's on the grants committee. Of course, we are led by Terrell Johnson, so really big hands up for him. He's our chief grants manager in the in the commission and he does a lot of work and we really thank him for everything he does. And as we do all of our grants managers. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Grants Committee. Governance. We have a new chair and who is also a new commissioner, Julianne Brienza.
All right, hello. It's me again, same same person as I described earlier. I am excited to embark on the journey of being the chair of the governance committee. I will be meeting with David Martens, I might be saying his last name wrong, I'm sorry. Coming up here pretty soon in a couple of weeks, just so I can get fully knowledgeable and learn things that I haven't been able to ascertain myself. And then myself and Chase and Natalie, who also form the governance committee, will be meeting the week of November 13th. And really setting forth on our key priorities for 2024. Our priorities are similar to what Reggie also outlined. But my goal is to make sure that the agency is governed efficiently. And that means that access to information for commissioners and the public is easily done. And also that our bylaws have a schedule as far as they are updated. And making sure the staff is also clearly aware of how the the agency is governed. So let's embark on this journey together and I can't wait to learn and also help the agency in this three-year term that I'm embarking on. So, thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you very much. Did you list the other members of your committee? I can't recall.
Yes, Natalie Hopkins is also on the committee as well as Chase Maggiano. And thank you to each of them for serving on the committee. I felt like I did arms, strong-armed some of them.
They really wanted to. They just needed a nudge. So, so thank you, Julianne. Arts education, Hector.
Yes, good evening. I'm a light-colored Latino with white hair, actually a senior, proud of it. And
I should have mentioned your attorney as chair and of course, and your commissioners, sorry.
That is correct. We met for the first time actually October 12th and the selection process was rather interesting, but invariably I ended up being the chair of the committee. Thank you very much for the invitation. I am, however, in a position to try to strong-arm a few people to join the committee as well. As we are rather small committee, but I am blessed to have Carla Sims and Chase Maggiano as part of the committee. And I want to thank them for volunteering and I am looking for new members. So in volunteering our chair and welcoming you to all our meetings if you can. And I would like to publicly ask for Gretchen's participation, whose sage wisdom I truly appreciate. So we're welcoming you to the committee if you will have us. Also, I wanted to just kind of sing loudly about Andrea Brown, whom I had the pleasure of meeting with in preparation for our first meeting, which will take place on November 14th. To very much praise her enthusiasm and she has given me and I think that will provide as a committee tremendous input and verb into her work. And I'm very much looking forward to seeing her and I know that all other participants in this committee will enjoy greatly her leadership in the role that she has taken. I am thankful for this second appointment and look forward to very positive results this year. And thankful that I have Andrea Brown as the person we'll be working with closely.
Good, thank you. Thank you, Hector. And here I'll reiterate that we are hoping to add four more commissioners. And that will allow us to help better populate committees, spread the love, spread the joy a little bit more. So hang in there with us, but if any of you again have a strong recommendation for a commissioner, in particular for awards one or seven, please let us know so that we can try to push that forward. Idea Committee, Cecily?
So as I told you guys, I am entranced at the airport going through security, so I can't stay on too long. But I was nominated as chair and we have yet to select our first meeting. But we're just looking forward to getting into the the 40 points, the 40 priorities that were identified to us so that we can start implementing it. So, yeah.
Good, good. And do you recall the other members of your committee?
I am literally going through the, no, and it's only because
Perhaps Andrew or someone could lead, read them on?
Sure, this is David. I'm happy to do so. So Natalie Hopkins
Thank you.
Cora Masters Barry and Kimber and Kitty.
Good, good committee. And and what we know will be helpful is once we get this DEI staff member on board, they can be very helpful there. So help is on the way, Cecily, help is on the way. But thank you and safe travels as you go through the airport. Normally, I'm the one running through an airport, so better you than me. Public Art Committee, Carla. Thank you, Cecily.
Thank you. So I'm Carla Sims. I am an African-American female wearing a white silk blouse. And I am excited to to announce that I am the new chair of the Public Art Committee. And on this committee, we have six members that I'd like to introduce. Cecilia or Cecily, I'm sorry, Chase, Kimber, Hector, and Gretchen. And I am very fortunate to have Lauren as our, as my liaison. So this evening, we have a couple of grants to vote on. And so I'm going to turn it over to Lauren to kind of walk us through that and then we'll take our vote.
Great, thank you.
Well, thank you for that introduction, Carla. I'm pleased to have you back. And as a committee member and now chairing the committee. Director Myers mentioned at the top that I would provide some additional updates about the DC Art Now exhibition that's in our gallery. And I just wanted to remind everyone, it's reflective of the finalists for the Art Bank Grant Program. We had this year over 230 applications, 93 finalists across all eight wards. There are 112 artworks on display, 78 in the gallery and 38 in our virtual gallery. And this exhibition will be on view till December 15th. And first up on deck is voting and recommendation for funding for the fiscal year 24 Art Bank Program. And I would like Michelle to May Curry, who is our brand-new curator, to walk through that grant program.
Hi, everyone. My name is Michelle May Curry. And I am an African-American and white female wearing a black shirt. As curator, I oversee and am presenting today the FY24 recommendation for our Art Bank Program housed within our Public Art Department. The Art Bank Grant is CAH's mechanism for the ongoing and annual acquisition of art from metropolitan artists to become a part of our Art Bank collection, which is then loaned to district government agencies for display in public areas and offices of government buildings. And the program's goals include growing the district collections' art to reflect the diversity of the metropolitan region, providing support, exposure, and professional development for artists, and enhancing the aesthetic experience for district employees and visitors that access the District of Columbia's government buildings and public spaces. And so award amounts to metropolitan artists vary, but eligible applicants within a 50-mile radius of the city can be awarded up to $15,000 for individuals and up to $20,000 for nonprofit arts galleries or organizations. As far as how the paneling process works, we organize three review panels that each participated in three rounds of review. Patrick, if you scroll down, this is, that information is on the second page. In the first round, all In the first round, all eligible applications were reviewed and scored by panelists in an online review of portfolios on a scale of one to ten. In a second round review, panelists recommended se- selected works for in-person finalist round review with a standard cutoff of seven point five. And then in a third round of in-person review, all ninety-two finalists' work were reviewed. Panelists made recommendations for acquisitions at that point. This year, as part of the scoring criteria, an additional focus was added to the RFA and panel scoring process to highlight the artist's contribution to the arts community in DC. Applicants were required to provide a new impact statement, giving artists an opportunity to further detail how their career and work commits to the growth of the arts in Washington DC. This allowed for us to think about both aesthetic rigor alongside social impact, which speaks to the goals and values of the Commission, supporting a thriving metropolitan arts ecosystem. So this year, we had a total applicant pool of two hundred and thirty-five artists and organizations and we are asking that the Commission fund the acquisition of eighty-eight pieces of work by seventy-six applicants for a total of three hundred and forty-seven thousand sixty dollars. Among these seventy-six applicants, ten are first-time applicants and thirty-nine artists are new to the Art Bank Collection, which is very exciting for our growing collection. If we could look at the stats comparison slide, thanks. Um so here is the full stats comparison in relation to the last three years. There's a few stats here I want to draw your attention to that show the impact of this year's funding for metropolitan artists. First, you can see that the amount we are awarding has steadily increased from year to year, as has the number of artists we're supporting. You can also see here that we have made a a few strides in our outreach towards seven and eight uh thanks to the outreach efforts of our public art team, namely Ron Hubbardson and Lauren Dugas clever. We saw a two hundred and eleven percent increase in applications from Ward Seven and we saw a three hundred and thirty-three percent increase in applications from Ward Eight. Of the seventeen finalists whose work we ultimately decided not to acquire, fourteen of those artists were already represented within our collection. Um so those are some of the stats I wanted to highlight and I'm happy to take questions.
Before you take questions, I really have to applaud this work. This is so amazing that the number of people we've impacted, the number of new people we've impacted, the search around equity that we've done, the extra effort to get wards in that were underrepresented before, just fantastic. Fantastic job to the entire team. And then, of course, I I made this point before, uh in the exhibition we had in the gallery, I recall one of those I attended where twenty people showed up and to have hundreds of people there was just so heartwarming for me and for the artists whose work deserved to be seen. So in case others didn't do it, I wanted to just applaud the team for a great, great piece of work.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. So now
Michelle, do you want to show the stats um slide? That might help break down a little bit more. So um Edward, there should be a a stats um spreadsheet? For Art Bank?
Thanks, yes. So they there are further statistics for you to read through underneath if you're interested that we were able to run this year.
You can see the trend over the years and how in the increase um in some areas and the decrease in others.
Congrats again. Uh and lead you to vote?
Yes, we do. And let me make a correction. I kind of uh volunteered a few extra people in our committee. It's actually just Cecily, Kimber and Gretchen. So Chase and Hector are not on the public but if they want to join. Uh yeah, we do need to take a vote. Can we get a motion?
Well, yes, who's gonna make the? I don't know if Lauren can or
No.
Can articulate the what it is.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
So I so move.
Now, my question is, what do what do we move?
Carla at the bottom.
The report.
I got it. I move to adopt the funding recommendations.
Right. I do, I recommend that.
Let let her finish the statement. Carla, say it again, I'm sorry.
I I um move that the Commission adopt the funding recommendations for the FY twenty-twenty-four Art Bank Program Grant as presented for a total funding amount of three hundred forty-seven thousand and sixty dollars.
Great. And thank you, Cora, for supporting that. So I'm gonna call your name and if you're in favor, say aye or nay or abstain. Cora Masters Barry?
Aye.
Julianne?
Aye.
Cecily?
Aye.
Oh, I thought you may have been running through the airport. Natalie? Chase? Kimber? Kimber still with us? I don't see her. Carla?
Aye.
Hector?
Aye.
Gretchen?
Aye.
It passes. Thank you very much. You said there were two votes or just one?
Yeah, we have the juried exhibition uh grant.
Thanks.
Um this is this is a a grant that we do every couple of years. Um and we have a special one this year in honor of um in recognition of the sixtieth anniversary of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four. And I'm going to turn it over to Deirdre Darden to walk through this grant program.
Good evening. Thank you, Lauren. Uh my name is Deirdre Darden. I'm an African-American female wearing a white um blouse. So I submit today for the recommendation for FY twenty-four Juried Exhibition Grant, uh JEG. JEG provides support for district-based artists to exhibit their work in a jury-themed visual art exhibition through grant awards and the use of CH's exhibition space located in the lobby of our building at two hundred I Street Southeast. For this cycle, the RFA sought works for an exhibition that will reflect on the legacy and impact of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four during its sixtieth anniversary year in two thousand twenty-four. This landmark legislation aimed to prohibit discrimination based on race, color, religion, sex, or national origin. By exploring this significant milestone, the exhibition seeks to provide insight into the progress, challenges and ongoing efforts towards achieving equity and social justice. There was one cycle for this grant. Um the allotted budget amount is twenty-eight thousand dollars. We went through one panel. Um Michelle and myself are sort of co-managing this grant at the moment and Lauren Dugas clever was our convener. Um all eligible applications were reviewed and the finalist scores ranked between sixty-four and eighty-seven and a half. Um the jurors reviewed the top-scoring artworks and were recommending twenty-eight artists for funding. And in those twenty-eight artists, it's representing fifty-three artworks. And per the RFA, each artist would receive a grant of a thousand dollars regardless of the number of artworks that are accepted into the exhibition. Um this is, we're not acquiring the works, this is just for exhibiting in the gallery. The exhibition bake breakdown based on the finalist works um that were submitted around the broad topic of legacy and impact of the sixtieth anniversary of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four. The jury and CH staff narrowed down the theme to the following unifying topics that will present a cohesive exhibition. Individual action, people of the movement, DC as a culture and place of political action, and the impact of material culture. Funding is available to support the recommended twenty-eight artists, again, at a thousand dollars each. So the total recommended request is twenty-eight thousand dollars. Um as Lauren mentioned, this is, you know, something that comes around every few years. Some of the outreach that we did, we had two virtual workshops that were held uh during the application period. We extended the deadline. We made direct efforts to reach artists in DC outside of CH's regular mailing list, including um reaching out to local artist groups like Black Artists of DC and the communication staff members of all the city council members. And we created a specially-designed social media campaign that went on CH's Instagram page.
Edward, do you want to maybe advance it to the next page, please?
Okay. Okay, yes, thank you. Um so here you'll see a breakdown of the wards that were represented. All eight wards were represented in the application pool and also in the recommended finalists. So here in this chart, you can see exactly how many uh per ward are listed. Among the forty-eight applicants, sixteen were first-time applicants and fifteen would be new CH grantees. And among the twenty-eight finalists, nine are first-time applicants and seven would be new CH grantees. And there is also a spreadsheet um breakdown if we want to show that as well.
Any questions before Carla reads the resolution or moves it? Any questions, Carmen?
Edward, could you pull up the spreadsheet?
Sure, Lauren, can you uh tell me how the spreadsheet was labeled or what's the name of the spreadsheet?
It should say JEG spreadsheet.
Well, the last slide had the resolution in red on the bottom.
There you go.
Last slide, you head up.
Would you just, so it's called the JEG?
Gotcha.
Yeah. Funding recommendations spreadsheet. There you go.
Yeah, so this also outlines the number of recommended artworks per artist.
Yes, we're looking for the
It can roll down and people just want to, so we're seeing that and then I guess Carla, if you want to read the funding recommendation. Hey Carla, you're on mute, maybe?
No, it it the resolution was on the last page.
No, she was
No, I was on mute. I'm sorry, I was reading it, but I was on mute.
Okay, good.
I um I move that the Commission adopt the funding recommendation for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four Juried Exhibition Grant as presented for the total funding amount of twenty-eight thousand dollars.
Good. I will go through the roll call again. If you're in favor, aye. If opposed, nay or no vote. Cora? Cora? Julianne?
Aye.
Aye, for Cora. My thing went on mute again, sorry.
Thank you. Cecily? I know Cecily's on a flight. Um Kimber?
Aye.
Carla?
Aye.
Hector?
Aye.
Gretchen?
Aye.
Natalie and Chase are not here, but it passes. So thank you, congratulations. Anything else from the Public Art Committee? If not, thank you. Thank you, Public Art Committee. Thank you, Carla. Thank you, Lauren. Thank you, everyone. Uh by way of unfinished business, uh we're gonna take a moment to re-review the dates for the FY twenty-four Commission meeting, so stay tuned for that. If there are any changes needed, we'll vote on them, uh those revised dates at our next meeting. The November meeting is November twentieth. So we'll cover that there. Well, we have new business, a couple of things. One, and I don't know, Chris, or if you or Aaron wants to say yet more about the second stakeholders meeting we had for Art All Week or not, I I can certainly give you that platform. I don't know that uh Aaron spoke about it briefly, but is there anything Aaron or Chris, you want to add on that?
Yeah, Ms. Chris?
Yes, hello, yes. I'm 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 happy to say a couple of words. We had um we had our second uh community stakeholder meeting for Art Week twenty twenty-five on October eighteenth at the parks, at the Park on Fourteenth. Um we, this event was primarily for uh our larger institutions, our arts institutions, to to come together to brainstorm sort of what what this twenty twenty-five project would encompass. Um we had forty attendees. Um and we have compiled uh notes and information from all the attendees and we will be um we will be sending out a survey at the beginning of next week uh to get more feedback. The next meeting, the next stakeholder meeting uh will be focused on individual artists and that will be on uh December fifth. And we will be sending out more information, reaching out to folks uh about that, where they can RCP for that event. Uh again, that'll be focused on individual artists to get feedback, to get the same similar type of feedback on sort of how they would envision um this twenty twenty-five Art Week and and how it'd impact them.
Good, good. It was fantastic, continues to be fantastic. So uh given the importance both of the DC Art All Week Initiative and the Foundation Initiative, at the Executive Committee meeting, it was suggested that we create two special committees, one focusing on the creation of the Foundation and one focusing on this Art Week DC. Uh so I don't know if now, Aaron, you wanted to, in a more formal way, present the recommendation for us to vote on the creation of those two committees?
Yes, and just confirming with Andrew, these are special committees that we'll be um uh voting on. So the recommendation is that uh two committees will be formed, one committee focused on Art Week DC or whatever iteration that name will end up being uh that will report out every month to the full body uh as well as a a special committee focused on uh the creation of a foundation and what that would look like uh from the standpoint of CH.
Great. We'll take that as a recommendation that we'll take to vote and I'll go through again, the names and if you're in favor of those two special committees being formed, uh aye, opposed, nay or abstain. Cora? Julianne?
Aye.
Cecily? Natalie? Chase? Kimber?
Aye.
Carla? Carla?
Aye.
Hector?
Aye.
Gretchen?
Aye.
And has Cora returned? Cora?
Yeah, I'm here. I haven't gone anywhere. My mute has a hard time getting it off. I'm here, yes.
That's an aye? Great. So it passes. Thank you very much. Um I want to remind all of my fellow Commissioners, you need to sign and submit, fill out your conflict of interest form. Uh we will put that on the website as well, but we need for all the Commissioners, if you haven't already, to fill out, sign and submit your conflict of interest form to Andrew. And is there anything else that I should cover, Aaron, or are we ready to adjourn?
I believe you're ready to adjourn.
There being no further business, the next meeting of the Commission will be held Monday, November twentieth at five thirty PM. The time is now seven oh nine PM and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone, and good evening.
Thank you.
And I and I was trying to say something, but my mute mixed up. Everybody gone now?
No.
No, but the meeting's open, but you can still say something.
Oh, thank you. I just want to invite everybody November eighteenth, which will be before our meeting, to the naming renaming uh ceremony from uh Good Hope Road to Marion Berry Avenue on the eighteenth of November. It's gonna be an event that is really replete with a lot of, lot of